It's six o'clock. I'll take roll call now. Mr. Fullerlove.
Here.
Mr. Dominic.
Here.
Mrs. Lyon.
Here.
Mr. Kaver.
Here.
Mrs. DeBlock.
Here.
Mr. Hown.
Here.
Mrs. Cleveland.
Here.
Okay, pleasure and allegiance. By pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Looking at the agenda, do we have any changes to the agenda?
Uh, the only change is the, we're gonna flip-flop the Good News Report 4.02 with Tiger Talent 4.03, so just switching the order.
Good. With that, is there any other changes? Here and now, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the agenda as amended. Your second?
Seconded.
A motion was made by Mrs. Lyon, seconded by Mr. Dominic, to approve, or excuse me, to adopt the agenda as amended. Mrs. Lyon?
Yes.
Mr. Dominic?
Yes.
Mrs. Cleveland?
Yes.
Mr. Kaver?
Yes.
Mrs. DeBlock?
Yes.
Mr. Hown?
Yes.
Mr. Fullerlove?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay. Moving over to recognitions of members of the audience, we have our FFA team here tonight to give us an update.
So, we are the Sherard FFA, and this is just a few officers of the officer team of the 2023-2024 year. Um, I'll start with me. I'm Levi Scher, and I'm the chapter president for this year.
I'm Alexis Werheim, and I am the sentinel for this year.
I am Andy Werheim, and I am the reporter.
I'm Hannah Schmidt, and I'm historian for this year.
We compete in multiple activities. One of them is our section livestock judging. Eight of our members competed in the Section 3 contest. The varsity team placed third, with Abby Weber, Levi Scher placing in the top 10. Madeline Berberick, one of our middle school members, placed third overall in the junior division. Ag Legislative Day. Last year, a group of our members participated in the Illinois Ag Legislative Day. This gives our members a chance to talk with legislators and see how our state legislate legislature works. We are pictured here with our representative Dan Swanson, who represents a portion of our school district. We also delivered baskets of Illinois ag products to the legislators.
The Mom Friend Project. This is an annual event that we began and are now partnering with the Rockridge FFA chapter. This is called our mom, the Mom Friend Project. It is a fundraiser for suicide awareness and prevention. This annual event was held last year at Rockridge High School and will be held this year at Sherard High School on Saturday, May 11. We have bingo, a silent auction, a number of activities for kids, and a couple of speakers on this topic. All the money that is raised goes to the schools to be used for programs or materials to achieve that goal. To date, we have raised over $7,500. Our chapter banquet. Each year, we hold our annual Sherard FFA chapter banquet. This year, it will be held on Sunday, April 28. At the banquet, the chapter provides the main meal with members' families bringing desserts. We take this opportunity to recognize the achievements of our members from the past year. We also installed a new team of chapter officers who will lead our chapter into the coming year.
The welding team. The welding team once again is winning every contest that they are competing in. This spring, they won the Blackhawk East Welding Contest, where they won by convincing margin. This was the third year in a row they won this contest.
Uh, building the trailer. Mr. Rastie's Ag Metals 3, two classes constructed this trailer last year. They did it basically from scratch, just purchasing the axles, fender walls, jack stands, and the light system. This year, they are completely renovating another trailer for a trick game.
Our Ag Mechanics team won the Section 3 Ag Mechanics Contest two years in a row. They also finished fifth in the state last year with aspirations of winning state later this spring. Components of this CDE include machinery and equipment, electricity, compact equipment, structures and environment, and natural resources.
The open house was a great experience last spring. This fall, we experimented with raising hydroponic tomatoes. For this spring, we have a wide variety of flowers and vegetables, which we will be selling. Our plant sale will be starting next Thursday, and the sales will be Tuesdays and Thursdays from 3 to 6, and Saturdays from 8 to 11.
Our state convention. Each year in June, we attend the Illinois State FFA Convention, which is held in Springfield. Our president and vice president serve as our official delegates, voting on all motions and electing the next slate of state FFA officers. This past year, our state champion horse judging team was recognized. We are also named state runner-up in Farm Heroes Harvest For All, Harvest For All Initiative, which recognizes chapters for all of their efforts to help reduce food insecurities.
Section 3 Vote Ag Fair and Horse Show. Our members are able to exhibit their livestock and other projects at the Section 3 Vote Ag and Horse Show. This past year, our members had grand champion market swine, grand champion market beef, and high point horse exhibitor. This fair gives our members a chance to show off the results of their hard work and development of the skills needed in the livestock industry.
One area we focus on is food insecurity. Food insecurity is a problem facing many people in our area communities. Seven years ago, our chapter took a small area of land, about four tenths of an acre, here at school, and made it into a garden to raise produce for the food pantries in our area. Last year, the drought did cause us to fall short of our year legal. We produced just over 3,800 pounds of produce. Our total for the seven years is almost 13 tons of fresh produce given in our local food pantries, given to our local food pantries. In the past two years, we have also donated $3,500 to those food pantries in our school district to allow them to purchase additional food during the winter months.
Each year, our FFA chapter runs a bingo games at the New Windsor rodeo. This gives our members a great opportunity to learn to interact with the general public and have fun while doing it.
We had two teams competing in the state FFA horse judging contest in September. Our varsity team placed third in the state. That was a great accomplishment, since two of the teams did not even own horses.
Another one of our fall events is our annual FFA Field Day. We invite area farmers to the event. The past year, Helena Agric enterprises of Orion brought in drone technology specialists to demonstrate the capabilities of drones and explain how they can be used to assist farmers in the monitoring of their fields.
Section 3 Land Use. It was a beautiful day last fall when our members competed in the Section 3 Land Use competition. The members identified soil slope, texture, soil color, and parent material, and elevated the sites for agricultural purposes and home sites.
Trap Shoot. There is a lot of diversity in the opportunities available for our members. Five of our members competed in the Section 3 FFA Trap Shoot.
The Section 3 Ag Sales Contest was held at Blackhawk East over our fall break. The members researched an ag product and gave individual and group presentations to a set of judges.
The National FFA Convention is one of the highlights of the year for our members. It is held in Indianapolis, Indiana, at the Indiana Convention Center in Lucas Oil Stadium in the fall. This year, there were almost 73,000 attendees. Our members listened to motivational speakers, participated in leadership workshops, met with ag industry professionals, visited college reps, and roused through the FFA Mega Shopping Mall. We also have a group meal where we practice proper meal etiquette.
Last fall, our FFA Horse Judging Team finished third in the National FFA Horse Judging Contest, placing ahead of 44 other state champion teams. Two of our members finished as top 10 individuals in the contest. They had to place halter classes, performance classes, give three sets of oral reasons, as well as taking written knowledge tests and giving a 10-minute group presentation of their solution to an equine industry scenario with just 10 minutes of preparation time.
Seven of our, seven of our members competed in the Section 3 Agronomy Contest. They completed a written exam, identified crop seeds, judged grain crops, and identified various types of farm equipment.
Veterans Day. Each year, we assist with our school Veterans Day assembly. Our chapter purchased a set of military flags to use during the program. We held the doors open for the veterans, greeting them as they enter. We then led the procession of the veterans into the school gym to begin the program. The members stand with the flags during the program and led the veterans from the gym to, after that it is done. We feel that it is, it is a simple way to honor those who served in our country. Chapter Visit and Section 3 LTFs. In the Illinois FFA, we have what is called Leadership Training School, or LTFs. During the school day, a state FFA officer and several section officers travel to each, each school to put on leadership workshops for members. Representatives from the chapters may then attend a section-wide evening event where members participate in officer training and join in, on more general leadership activities.
Last year, we decided to host a fitting clinic for cattle exhibitors. We wanted to give exhibitors, especially the younger ones, the skills that they need to increase their chances of success in the show ring. We believe that this will help encourage those exhibitors to further develop their leadership, their livestock skills. We expanded the fitting clinic this spring to include swine, sheep, goats, and along with the cattle. It will be held on the last Saturday at the Mercer County Fairgrounds. We are partnering with Kent Feats to help expand our resources to be able to have a stronger impactful event for the young exhibitors. We will be include, we will be including areas on feeding and nutrition, as well as show ring prep.
Towards the end of the first semester, we hold our annual winter party. The members divide up into teams for a gingerbread house contest. It is great to see just how competitive and creative they are just with house, with their help, house building.
An evening in February was spent at Blackhawk East competing in the Section 3 Vet Science and Public Speaking Contest. Seven of our members competed in vet science, where they completed several hands-on practicums, a written knowledge test, and a math test. Three of our members competed in a prepared public speaking contest, an extemporaneous speaking contest, and a recitation of the FFA creed.
We hosted a workshop for community members on creating a metal flower. Mr. Rastie led this workshop. The workshop enrollees were able to make a metal rose by incorporating shop safety, safety, and metal working skills.
Faculty and Staff Breakfast. Each spring, we have a special faculty and staff appreciation breakfast at Sherard Junior and Senior High School. Our members arrive at the school at 5:30 in the morning to begin preparation, preparing the breakfast foods. At each table, we post information cards about agriculture and the impact it has on our area. This year, our superintendent and most of our school board members were present for this activity. Ag Olympics. We also have an Ag Olympics featuring contests of egg on a spoon, egg toss, roping a calf, driving a nail, and wiffle ball. Last year in the spring, we held an FFA bonfire. We slammed road ATV's, played volleyball and softball. We realize that sometimes you just need to set time aside just to have a little bit of fun.
We assist each year with the Aces Camp. We help with the Farmer for a Day Station. We help guide the second graders through each of the five simulations of what a farmer might do during his or her working day.
Officer Tree. Each year, shortly after school is out, our officers get together for a day filled with fun and planning. The officers set goals for themselves and the chapter. They also devote time to bonding as an officer team. This has shown to be a critical component to keeping a cohesive officer team, which builds greater effectiveness in reaching our chapter goals.
In the fall of the year, we like to give thanks to the many farmers who spend countless hours harvesting their crops. We do this with our Feed the Farmer event. This past fall, 25 of our members gathered on a non-school day to grill butterfly pork chops or sandwiches. We combine that with chips, cookies, and a bottle of water. And that day, we delivered 80 sack lunches and a thank you to farmers who are busy with harvest activities.
For our FFA homecoming float, all of the members really enjoy getting together to be a part of the homecoming parade. Even though they know that the FFA will not be judged, they really challenge themselves to come up with a creative and novel float to show their school pride. This year's theme was board games, and we created a Scrabble-themed float.
New Windsor Parade Float. Like the homecoming float, the members really stepped up with creating a unique float for the New Windsor Rodeo Parade. This year, we went with an older country song from Smoking the Bandit, "Eastbound and Down." We won an award for parade floats for the third year in a row. Drive Your Tractor to School Day. One of the most looked forward to events of the year is Drive Our Tractor to, Drive Your Tractor to School Day. The students wash out their tractors, and they get up early to drive the tractors to school. One of our members brought a tractor set up to have a breakfast tailgate for those who drove their tractors in.
We had a very busy year. There are even some things that we admitted in our presentation that felt it was getting long. We're already in the process of making plans for next year. Thank you for your time.
I do want to add one more thing. It has been very enjoyable this spring, especially since we added our third ag instructor position. Miss Ellie Cranch, she's been doing a phenomenal job, and we really appreciate having her.
It's always hard for us to find another organization in our school that does as much as you guys do. You guys are the beacon of whatever organization our school should be. So, thank you for all your love and type of love.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming in tonight. We appreciate it. And thank you for breakfast. I must have made it.
You bring food, we're there.
Okay, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. As mentioned, we're gonna go a little bit out of order on the agenda this evening. We're going to skip to the Tiger Talent portion first. Tiger Talent's probably one of the most entertaining and fun things I get to do in this role that doesn't directly work with kids. That's usually the first, so this is a close second. Good way to put it, Tiger Talent recognizes those people in our district that are employees, that if a complete stranger rolls in from out of town, these are the people we want them to meet, because they would immediately be sold on how awesome our district is. So, having said that, I will be quiet and turn it over to Kayla to show you a few things about this month's Tiger Talent Award winner.
This month for Tiger Talent, through April, we get to choose not a member of Tiger Talent, but the member of Tiger Talent. The very one and only Mrs. Kathy Slattery from Sherard Grade, and I could not be more excited to nominate her, and our building is thrilled to have her being recognized this month as well.
She's so kind to us when we get in our lunch. I hug her every day, so it's kind. And we know a little bit of sign language, so we use it to talk to her. And she does, she talks back, and we know what she's saying, so it's very kind.
She is genuine. She is one of the most genuine people that I've ever met. She is at Sherard Elementary because she wants to be here, not because she has to be here, but because she truly wants to be here.
She loves the kids, and she's great to work with. And she cares about her job, but she cares a lot about her volunteering, which is what she does a lot.
She helps first grade make our copies, and she helps us with our math books and tearing them out and stapling them together. So, she helps us personally, but she helps everybody in this school. But definitely, she helps first grade. She's the heart of our school. I think she just, she's here for the best reasons. She loves the kids. She loves what she does.
But sometimes she's not here, and I'm like, oh no, why don't you have anybody to give a hug to?
She brings into this building her smile alone. It, it just, it makes us who we are. It makes this building who it is.
Everything's about the kids. You know, she wants them to have a great experience here. She's always doing extra little things.
Uh, she's well-known for giving a lot of little gifts out. I brought some with today. One of them, back at Christmas time, she gave us some little fun sayings and an ornament to hang on the tree. During COVID times, she gave me a fancy little mask to wear around the school at that time. And then even just over Easter break, she filled in Easter egg candy for every single student. Just filled it and wrote positive messages inside.
If I become a teacher, I would like to do the thing that she does, where she, like, gives Easter eggs out to every year with people and their snowflakes that says Mrs. Slattery, and every year I collect them and put them on my tree.
The reactions from the kids were so touching. We wrote little thank you notes to Mrs. Slattery, and one of my students, I think, said it best. Thank you for the egg. It was very unexpected, and I loved it.
And it's really kind of her to, like, put the effort and time to, like, give everybody an egg and layer a snowflake.
Spending her money on people who are at this school and not just herself, which is really kind.
She's overcome so much, but, and she passes that on to the kids. They can do it. You can do it. If I can do it, you can do it.
You are loved.
You are kind.
You are special.
You are awesome.
I would say that any positive adjective that you could come up with, whether that's being dedicated, passionate, friendly, happy, charismatic, driven, encouraging. Did I say dedicated and passionate? Miss Kathy embodies them all.
She's popsicle that you never thought you would get in summer. You finally get it, and it's perfect.
One of the things that came to mind when I started to think about this as a slide record with this type of talent management mission was who should embody, what would be a good quote that would fit Miss Kathy? And we sat and thought for a bit, and finally, it's just kind of an aha day moment. Miss Kathy is just like the giving tree. And I would imagine, just like the giving tree, if you asked Miss Kathy or anybody, say, hey, I need a borrow your arm today, hey, can I borrow that here, maybe a leg? Miss Kathy would, without hesitation, hand it to you, much like the giving tree. I better put this back in the box. I'd probably hand it to her right now. This is, I really do appreciate that. She does everything that she means to not only our school, but to our community. And I could not be more thankful to have her as not only a colleague here at Sherford, but I consider her to be a frontier as well. Whether it's the fun texts that she'll send at night, make you little emojis, or just give me a wink in the hallway, or, ooh, I've got an idea I want to share with you. It's always gonna be something special, amazing, and just really warms our hearts here. So, thank you, Miss Kathy. We love you, and we appreciate it. And this one certainly has been served. So, I hope you're feeling that love and appreciation, so.
Thank you. I love you.
I am for you.
We love you.
I wish I would have met her many years ago. She's just a rare person.
Our school is better with you. We appreciate you. Thank you.
We love you.
I'm sorry, Kathy. I lied. I'll make it up to you. See you later.
So, with that, I would like to present the limited edition Tiger Talent Golden Apple to Miss Kathy Slattery. Congratulations. Thank you for everything that you do.
Okay. Moving on now to Tiger Talent. Just passed a presentation.
Good news.
No, good news, that's fine. Good news report.
Good news report. Casey, are you, you're good news also?
Yes, sir.
All right, let's have it. I said you could top that.
Oh, yeah, we'll try here. It's, it's a light one. I apologize. Lots of good news coming from our district. Uh, from all schools, there's a number of items as well. IIR testing is, has, or is close to wrapping up at all schools for the year, which is a huge celebration. All Sherard schools recognize students at the Illinois Principal Association Student Leadership Breakfast at the Vibrant Arena on April 12. From Winola Elementary, Mary Brunn and James Reinhardt. From Sherard Elementary, Madeline Bridey and Hudson Boner. From Matherville, Elena Volker and John Churchill. From Sherard Junior High, Kylie Mathis and Alex Serry. From Sherard High School, Mara Franklin and Vincent Wiley. On April 8, students and staff had an opportunity to view the amazing solar eclipse during the school day. We want to thank everyone and staff for helping to help keep the students safe by emphasizing safe practices throughout this historic event. Special shout-outs from Winola Elementary and Matherville Intermediate to the New Windsor Library for their generous donation of glasses for the students to use for the event. Last Saturday, April 13, students from Winola and Sherard Elementary were recognized and competed in the Mercer County Historical Society Museum's Lincoln Poster Contest. Winola Grade winners from Mrs. Minch's class, Shelby Shivers, first place, Harper Payne, second place, Jocelyn Harper Lehman, in third place. Sherard Grade winners from Mrs. Kelly's, Kyla Gall, first, Josephine Dolan, second, Emily Massarallo, third, and Gemma Cook and Kenzie Tornquist with honorable mention. Sherard Grade winners from Mrs. Saylor's class, Nolan Kubas, first, Isla Grove, second, Noah Van Tyne, third, and Hattie Anderson, honorable mention. Third grade student Rosalie Hennessy from Sherard Grade and several Matherville students also participated, as well as a number of high school junior high students, in the Seussical the Musical on April 5 through 7. Kindergarten Roundup will be taking place on May 1, and Winola and Sherard Elementary are excited to meet our newest little Tigers. And now some individual building news. From Winola Grade, Winola Elementary hosted a fabulous family night yesterday on April 16. They appreciated the wonderful turnout and all of the help that went into making it a huge success despite the questionable weather. Sherard Grade, Sherard Grade will be hosting our Fine Arts Night tomorrow night on April 18 from 5:30 to 6:30, and the book fair will be open as well with some sci-fi themed activities, and we hope to see everyone out there for a wonderful evening. Fourth grade student Matthew Gorbach was elected Illinois State Historian of the Children and will be traveling to Washington DC on April 18 and 19 to attend the national convention. He will be serving as both a voting delegate and aide at the convention. Congratulations to Matthew. The Sherard Grade Little Tiger, or the Sherard Little Tiger Wrestling Team recently achieved second place at the IKWF Intermediate Division's Regional Championship. Congratulations to our Tiger wrestlers. From Matherville, Matherville students sang the National Anthem recently at the Quad City Storm Hockey Game on April 5. From the junior high, Students of the Month, Archer Faith, Nebea Tracy, Jenna Day, Isabelle Aguilar, George Stroh, Alex Serry, and Stephen Hollins. From the high school, Students of the Month, Chloe Barnes, Garrett Barnes, Autumn Kunglusan. Sorry if I missed that name up. I apologize. That's right. James Blackwell, Alex Sims, Addison Johnson, Riley Robinson, Vivian Shivers, and Levi Scher. Tyler Fox placed third in the Western Illinois University Accounting Competition. Students went two on Friday. Megan Mackin placed fourth. And finally, from the athletics, the baseball team, it might be a more cursed course, I apologize. Baseball team was 12 to 1 as of noon on Monday. Softball team, 11 to 3 as of noon on Monday. Girls' track won the Monmouth Invitational, first of 12 teams. And girls' track won Riverdale Invite, first of 12 teams. And the band and choir both received Division Ones at IHSA Organizational Contest this past weekend. And that is Good News Report.
Thank you.
Thank you, Casey. Lots of good news this, this, this year.
Okay, moving on to the approval of the consent agenda items. Any questions to the consent agenda items? Hearing, it seems like, where's Kathy going?
Business stuff.
No, that's good.
Thanks for the story.
Sue's got a second.
A motion is made to approve the consent agenda items as presented. Motion made by Mrs. DeBlock and by Mrs. Lyon. Mrs. DeBlock?
Yes.
Mrs. Lyon?
Sure.
Mr. Hown?
Yes.
Mr. Kaver?
Yes.
Mrs. Cleveland?
Yes.
Mr. Dominic?
Yes.
Mr. Fullerlove?
You betcha.
Moving on. Hope you, Carl. Hope IT problems.
Good evening, everyone again. The first item that we have on the agenda for my report tonight is a request for the June Board Meeting. Juneteenth is now a recognized holiday in the state of Illinois, so if possible, we would move the board meeting back one day to the 20th so that the 12 month employees who are off that day would be able to come in the next night and have the board meeting. Has nothing to do with the fact that.
I, Carl.
Your superintendent was born on June 19th.
Now he can't hold it.
Just fringe relatives. I'm sorry. No. Moving into the 20th, Thursday, 20th. With your permission.
I have no issue. Anybody else?
No issues.
Do it.
All right, very good.
All in favor? Yeah, everyone's in agreement?
Yeah.
Okay, we're good.
The next item I have, this is something that we've, I want to give credit, first of all, to Becky. She's been a phenomenal help with this. It's Hazard Mitigation Plan. So the umbrella is FEMA as the federal agency and then the state of Illinois and then down to Mercer County. So essentially, it gets skipped all the way from FEMA down to Mercer County. And then since we are part of Mercer County, we qualify for hazard mitigation projects, which essentially, what can we do in case something bad happens that we are more ready to go? This is essentially a grant funded, grant funded opportunity. So if the money does not get appropriated, we do not get these things and we do not have to do them unless there is enough money appropriated to do them. I did include in your packet some of the items that we would qualify for if this gets funded. And this was, since this is run through the county, I was at probably six different meetings. They had to have three different public hearings. It had to sit on display for 30 days until it was finalized and they had to sit on display for another 30 days. But there are multiple school districts involved with this and multiple small government entities that fall under the umbrella of the county. So, long story short, the three big items that we have that we would be able to pursue would be to purchase and install automatic emergency backup generators at districts, or excuse me, at each district school to make sure that we have continuity of power. For example, last night at about 8:30, I was on the phone with Ameren checking to see when the power was going to come back on in Viola so that we didn't lose any food at Winola with the coolers. So this obviously would help with things like that. We would not have to ever cancel school if power went out. Sorry, kids. You have to show up. The second big one would be buried power lines at all district schools so that on district property, we would not have any overhead lines whatsoever, which I think would be awesome. And then finally, purchase and install grounding systems in each district building that would protect our infrastructure, computers, electrical system, HVAC, et cetera. And that would probably pay off in the sense that we would also get reduced property tax, or not property tax, excuse me, property insurance rates. Because things would just be that much more secure and safe. Some of the things that are not big ticket items but would be included to build our case, run educational programs. Essentially, we would have either a federal or a state agency come in and talk to the kids about what are natural disasters, what are manmade disasters, what are some things that you should be aware of? The first thing that comes to mind, forgive me because of yesterday, don't drive through water. You know, literally things like that, just to educate kids on what are the dangers of the natural world out there. And then also perform periodic district wide, multi-jurisdictional training on the district's essentially hazard plan. This is something that we do every year anyway. This is something that is documented by the ROE. We have to have crisis plan drills, tornado drills, fire drills, et cetera. So these are things that we're already doing. It just presents a stronger argument for why we should be funded for all the school projects on page one.
Is there a way that we could start on the first item on sheet two of the education of the students without having a ton of funding coming in from the grant? Because it seems, they could just get an edge at the end and kind of start that conversation?
I think so. It's probably, that would probably fall under like their natural science classes where they can do things like that. The thing I'm hoping for, given Reese's presentation, is no more of the unfunded mandates where I go to the teachers and say, hey, I need you to do this. So, you know, this would be more of being able to bring in a box program from some government entity that would talk to them. And we could probably do that now if there's other nonprofits that do things like that too. And if Tim and I sat down and went through the curriculum, we would probably find an awful lot of these things already being done, would be my guess. And with the FFA, talking about the manmade hazards, you know, just growing up on a farm, for example, you know, chemical handling, education. You know, understanding that, you know, what you have to do right and wrong. So there's probably a lot of things over already. Any other questions on that? Not quite sure when we will hear whether or not that's been funded, but there is a resolution that gets us officially into it that will need to be adopted and signed tonight.
Thank you, Becky. With that, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the Hazard Mitigation Plan as presented. Your second?
Second.
A motion was made by Mr. Domnick, second by Mr. Caver, to adopt the Hazard Mitigation Plan as presented. Mr. Domnick.
Yes.
Mr. Caver.
Yes.
Mrs. Cleveland.
Yes.
Mrs. DeBlock.
Yes.
Mr. Helm.
Yes.
Mrs. Lyons.
Yes.
Mr. Fuller.
Yes.
Motion care.
Okay, the next item, honestly, I didn't know exactly what to call this. It's kind of connecting properties, so I refer to it as the District Property Easement. This is one that we've been discussing for a while. The Village of Shoreard, and I was going to pull up a map, but essentially I can point because of where we are. The Village of Shoreard wants to extend their equipment shed to the north. And we share the same attorney as the village with Churchill and Churchill. So essentially what it is, we would seed, if you will, about four tenths of an acre to the village so that we no longer have to mow it. All the football practices for the little kids and such are on this side of it. Let's see, are we connected? You are. Get an extra. Okay, here we go. I use Google Earth to pull it up. So essentially, it's because of the shadows, these lines aren't exact. Here's city hall right here. We're sitting right about here. Whoa.
Hence the name clever touch.
I'm not clever. I'm supposed to be able to touch. So behind the city hall here, I think there's hope for the city one day to be able to take over this property that's right next door, just to be able to expand operations. But anyway, it's about four tenths of an acre here. I included the legal description in your packet. When we actually get the papers from the attorney, I'll bring that forth for official adoption. I do have to say out loud, the village has been exceptional to us. Anytime we need anything, including big ticket items, like when we fixed the new drive into the driveway, you'll notice there's a cut going across that to get all of the storm water on the other side of the road where it belongs. They did that without asking. We didn't, we didn't have to pay for anything. They put in a concrete structure on each side of the road with a tube going under it and taking it all the way down to the natural drainage. So anytime I have a question, I can call to your road law and he's on it, or Troy Green. And they've been good to us, so. Any questions on that one?
Dan, any?
I told him not water towers right there.
Okay.
I have a question. They're going to own it, right?
Yeah.
Okay. The word easement is not right now. An easement is when you allow somebody to like pass through the, but they're going to own it. It'll be ours. Okay.
Transfer, I guess, would be the easiest.
Which I think they, early on, it was explained to me they're both taxing, they're both taxing bodies. So they just, either way, it just kind of one hand washes it together.
Significant, unless if we were to sell that to a private, it would be about this much paper. All right, any other, and like I said, I'll keep everybody updated and hopefully next month bring forth a resolution. All right. Next item I have is just to preliminarily talk about the budget. We will be amending the budget again this year in June likely. So before we have to present an actual official proposal for an amended budget next month, I just kind of wanted to give everybody a heads up on what's coming. First item that we will talk about is everybody's favorite thing, revenue. How much do we have coming in? We are on target for revenue except for our interest investments again this year. As of yesterday, they are 375% of what we expected. When Lindsay and I talked August and set these numbers, we were kind of listening to the Fed that the rates are going to come down, the rates are going to come down, the rates are going to come down. They didn't. So we budgeted approximately $150,000 and as of yesterday, there was 413 in there. So. Yay, good news. All right. The other thing is our corporate personal property replacement tax. Remember that was, I did a little bit of a presentation back in the fall that talked about, that was supposed to drop significantly for many districts. That's like that voodoo tax that nobody has ever been able to explain to me how exactly it works. It's all the stuff that the corporation owns that we would look at and say, well, that's like a house. But for a corporation, that's considered personal property. That is at 122% and we're probably expecting more this year. So we had budgeted 250,000 or about 305,000 right now. And then we are already past our one cent sales tax estimate from last year. We're at 102% of what we had initially anticipated receiving. So overall, we've received 83.66%. That will quickly jump up to 100% in June when we get the, the next year's early tax revenues. A couple of things to look at for the expenditures, just to keep an eye on that we'll have to talk about. There are several within the funds, they are fine, but there are several accounts that we'll have to maybe make some adjustments to. Several of these are a result of the expiring grants that we had, collectively known as COVID money, when I talk about it. So there are some adjustments that will need to be made because there's different deadlines on when those funds have to be expended. So as the SRA money comes up and the emergency money that we've had to spend, we made sure that the grant money is spent first so that we're not leaving dollars on the table. We've had a couple of long term subs that, for example, maternity leaves that you just can't budget for. That blows up a sub budget pretty quick. But other than that, the overall fund balances about this time of year, you want to be running at about 75% of expenditures and almost all of them, including the big one where, I'll tell you, the head fund one by itself. Sorry, the head fund is big. The head fund, we're spending 72.33% as of today. So we're right on target. The only one we're going to have to look at is the, our Torp Services Fund, or essentially our legal fund. We did not bump that up very much this year or the coming year, tried to keep the levy somewhat stable. Our property insurance rates have skyrocketed. And when I met with our agent, she's like, that's what it is. We can chop them around, but realistically, nobody knew it's going to take a school right now. Couple that together with the fact that we just had a beautiful new addition in Mr. Lyons's building, we'll blame him. We have a lot more real estate to insure. So basically by itself, the property casualty insurance, I would say it was about 12% bump. And Sherry, our agent, was great. She goes, oh, that's really not bad compared to the news I've had to deliver to some districts that have had claims. And I was like, oh gee, thanks. That's great. So, but anyway. Yeah, exactly. Transportation Fund, just a little bit of a warning. That'll be wonky because remember this year, we took delivery of three buses, one from the previous year. So while the fund balance looked awesome a year ago, it's going to look worse this year. The bottom line on your bank account is the same. It's just the annual fiscal year budget. And those are the high and low lights for what we can expect next month with an official budget request.
We appreciate you telling us early, so why not come up early and present it?
If you see, if you ever see something in maybe January, that means it's really bad. No, I'm just kidding.
Nice.
You're right. So, all right.
All right. Going over to the approval of the contract. I know Dr. Johnson is going to pull up some information on our new SEA contract that we negotiated in record time.
Yes.
I thought you have the hours. I didn't realize. I'm always keeping track of how many hours.
Oh, for sure. Yeah.
Does it seem like a quarter of that?
Yeah.
It was good. Okay, I know we have several folks with us tonight from the SEA. So at the end of that, I'll probably ask a couple of questions, do the call and response thing and see how we do. So this year, tonight, we'd like to present the FY '25 to '27, so from July 24th to June 27th, a three year collective bargaining agreement. I want to talk about the process and I'm not sure if anybody else will as well. We started in late January, roughly till mid February, mid to late February. We met in a traditional bargaining format, which yes, means we're actually on opposite sides of the table, legally referred to as adversarial bargaining, although it did not, in my opinion, feel adversarial whatsoever. We met five times, approximately 13 and a half hours. And as indicated in this awesome chart, the teams were together for about 90% of that time. I was trying to figure out a way to draw an eye on there, like tack them in if I'm going to give them up. But anyway. But again, I wanted to include that because when you have traditional or adversarial bargaining, it traditionally is you're together for a sliver of time, you exchange proposals, you go back to a room and you debate the merits of the proposals with your own team, come back together for a little while and do the same thing over and over and over and you're running laps back and forth. Throughout the years, the, obviously, the good relationships that have been built with this board and the SEA certainly showed through because that's, that's not what happened. So when I say, our own attorney, Fraser, when I said we were together over 90% of the time, she's like, you what? What does that mean? And I said, literally, we were all together in the same room. The first night, for example, we showed up early and had first and second nights. We showed up early and had something to eat and I don't know that we really left each other's presence, did we, the first two times? So literally, both sides together the whole time in the library discussing the proposals. It wasn't a, I have to take a minute and go in the next room and we'll get our strategy. No. That's how honest and open the process was, that people were able to ask questions openly without having to go next door and get a strategy. Again, I mentioned the trust that's been built over the years between the board and the SEA. I think this probably is the most important. There was a desire to creatively, but also collaboratively solve challenges. It wasn't a, if you change this, everybody's life will be fine. It was truly a collaborative process that here's an idea that we can throw out. And nobody blinked twice when it was, why is that idea a good thing? And then nobody hesitated to explain why they thought that idea was a good thing. It was a pretty, I'm not a big fan of this term, but it was a pretty secure, safe space to discuss ideas. The, let me go back to this. I want, I want to honor the folks who did the hard work on the board side. Reese, Kim, and Erin, do you guys have anything that you want to throw in there as we talk about? Reese, Kim and Erin, do you guys have anything that you want to throw in there as we talk about the process and what we actually did?
Mostly it did not seem like hard work whatsoever. It was pretty enjoyable time spent and productive.
Yeah, I, again, Kim and I have done this three times now. I think just the trust that we have with the committee, because it's pretty much been the same players on that side, same players at least with Kim and I. But it was just, it makes it easier because we knew what to expect. Yeah. It's, it's, it was very easy. Like actually, not that you don't want to look forward to, but like first year, I'm like, oh God, here we go again. Not just because it was new, not that the first time was bad, but now it's like, okay. Like it was just amazing how far we've come along with, you know, before you start here. And then I think both sides, we really started like here. So getting to the middle was pretty darn quick.
Yeah, no, I, I think it was a, a great process. I don't think it was adversarial by any means. I think both sides worked together. I think both sides came in with an open mind, knowing that there may be some disagreements, but at the same time, uh, there was open dialogue to where we could discuss it honestly.
I'm old and I can't see that far, but I know we have several. I saw Robert walk in, lead negotiator, Robert Wilson. I'd like to thank him for all of his time and we, we never really, you know, sidebars, you know, where it was, you know, just Robert and I or just Reese and Robert were, were limited. We just didn't feel hemmed in at all by that fact that it was going to be both teams talking. When Robert and I would talk, it would literally be about things like arithmetic. Or we were, we were just talking today about a couple of spacing issues. Robert admittedly said that his past life as an E L A person was kicking in and there was his face in it.
I tried to beat that down.
Keeps bubbling up.
It keeps bubbling up every once in a while.
So again, I wanted to recognize Robert and, and the team for the hard work and if Robert had anything to add.
It's, like I said, this is our third time working through contracts with, uh, with, you know, Kim and Reese and Erin jumping in this time. And it's always been, it, it seems like it's gotten easier to work with you guys every time. I mean, we just come in, it's, it's an easy process. Every contract's gotten better, I mean, which is great, you know? So I mean, each and every contract we've had always gets better and, you know, which is really good. And that's, that actually is, you know, the hard work of the entire board because you guys have done a great job of keeping the district in a, you know, financially great position to allow us to be able to have those kinds of contracts. So kudos to you guys and the work you guys do. I know, I know this job is kind of thankless sometimes, but, um, the members, our members, um, the union members really appreciate the hard work that you guys do, even though it doesn't always get said, but they do. I mean, I, I talked with several at the ratification meeting and they do appreciate all of your work to make these things happen and make these things possible in our district. But no, good, a great process all together. Food was good too.
Just some highlights. I've been through the, uh, the interest-based bargaining federally sponsored three or four times. And one of the things that the federal mediators always says is it always comes down to money in the end. But it didn't necessarily feel like that this time. I thought that there was a, a lot of mutual respect there, a lot of discussion over the numbers. There was no arguing over numbers, it was, it was talking about numbers. The final numbers for certified teachers, it's a four-four-three, uh, dollar twenty-five an hour for classified or E S Ps, each year of the contract. Within there, there are longevity bumps, so each year of seniority, um, there is something, not each, each year for teachers of seniority, there's something. And then there is something in the contract also for longevity to reward E S Ps or the classified people as well. Benefits are tremendous. That was probably one of the things that sticks in my head more than anything is when we sat down, both parties understood that it wasn't a salary negotiation, it was a total benefit package negotiation because, um, from, from the financial standpoint of the board, uh, you cannot, you cannot ignore what kind of an impact your fringe benefits are going to have, your different benefits that aren't salary, the other things. That can literally make or break a district. And I think that we had great conversations and it was not a, it was not something that anybody had to explain to one side or the other about how benefits worked and what type of a financial impact those could have. So that was something that made it very, very special as well. Salary, salary stipends, AKA bonuses, uh, that have been made in the past. That's something that I feel works, works good for both parties. It allows the district to reward employees. And then it is, it is listed as a stipend so that if, knock on Formica, things turn bad, that's not something that is permanent within the, the salary schedule that would put anybody in danger. Extracurricular stipend increases we talked about. Classified retirement incentive for unused sick days is something that certified teachers enjoyed for several years. Now that's going to extend to both sides. Maternity and paternity leave, uh, this is something that'll hopefully make our district that much more attractive to young teachers coming out. Essentially that, that translates to two weeks of leave at home with your baby. Okay, and I know how important that is to, uh, to young parents, having been there seventy-two years ago myself. And then professional development up to eight hundred dollars a year, that is nearly doubling that for five hundred currently. I think that speaks, the board felt strongly that we want to make sure that our teachers have the tools that they need to be successful. Professional development has always been a conversation, how can we get better? And I think that speaks to the strength of the teaching staff, that they are, they're looking to get better. We're not coasting, we want this money to be able to use it. And it's, and it's a phenomenal investment by the school board.
Other thing I was going to say too is like, a lot of proud things are on there again, a lot of creativity. I think one of the most creative things we did was the annual salary stipend. And I gotta give full credit to Robert and his creative thinking with being to the annual salary stipend. So thank you, Robert.
You're welcome.
The annual salary stipend? Yes. Yep, got it. That's, I just want to make sure you got it. Food was there.
I appreciate that. You told me to come up with something, I had to.
Most creative thing we did.
It's a way for me to leave my mark on it.
Some of the things that are changes, changes in this contract that would probably be seen as, uh, tradition or processes that we've grown used to that are going to change. The school calendar will rest with the board, not that it hadn't before, but it, I, this speaks to, not to sound cheesy, this speaks to the harmony that exists between the board and the staff, that there's not going to be such a tremendous upheaval in what everyone has become used to with a school calendar here. Will there be changes based on where days fall, certainly where holidays fall and breaks? Yes, but it's not something we're suddenly going to say, okay, we're going to start in September and roll all the way through to May first and take no breaks. There, there's a harmony that exists and there's a trust that exists between the staff and the, uh, and the Board of Education. So, um, that, I'll still bother the same people at the calendar committee, even though you think you're done, you're probably not. Cause I'll call and ask opinions, but, um, that will be a change because that piece is omitted from, or deleted from the contract. This year taught us, uh, five emergency days aren't always enough. So we're going to make sure that we put a little bit more of a pad, maybe five to seven emergency days. Accrual method of sick and personal time for classified employees, as opposed to awarding everything in one lump sum on the first day of service of the new year. It'll be roughly fifty percent upfront accrual after that. Tuition reimbursement flexibility, if we have a hard to fill position, the Board of Education will have the opportunity to spend some money to get somebody certified to fill that position. So that, that's a phenomenal amount of trust that the S E A is placing in the board. And then salary schedule placement for flexibility for new teachers. Traditionally, many districts have not awarded years of service for private school credit. There's now a, a line in the contract that essentially says if you're, if you're acting as a certified teacher, whether that's public or private, um, we can have that conversation and give you those years of service. So for example, if somebody wants to come from a private school here to Sherard and they've got six years of teaching experience, uh, they'll start on step six as long as they were working as a certified teacher, licensed teacher in that area. Doesn't matter whether it was a public or private school. Hopefully that can help us attract more talent as well. Outcomes, this is probably where I'll look for some help from everybody that was in the room at the time. I think, these are my words, I think it was, again, a better understanding of what everybody does and why we're here and better relationships. There's great opportunities for everybody. This is a three-year contract and it offers some, some little tidbits in there that mean long-term stability, both for the district and for the, uh, the union. Living within our means. It's one thing to look at fund balances and say, there's five million extra dollars there, we'd like that next year. You know, the S E A didn't walk in and say that, okay? And I respect that very much, I want to say that out loud. You know, is for, you know, four-four-three, is that a good contract historically? Yes, it is, but it's also living within means. It's not going to bankrupt the district. It's going to respect the budgeting process and essentially pay what we can without inviting H S B to step in and say, hey, we need to trim this a little bit. And then finally strengthening our district and that's not just the contract itself. I think that's also the underlying process. What all am I missing?
I, I would say is I, one of the things I said, said at the beginning is this has been a, what, what I like about what we've done with the S E A is it, it's been a long-term, every contract we look to, don't, don't eat everything in one bite. This contract has been a long-term project that we've worked over the last three contracts. So when, when we're actually approaching the contract from a language point of view, there's very little that we have to change or clean up. It's, it's been, we've all usually come to agree. It's usually every year, there's always something in there, as Robert says, that the law changes and it, it happens always right in the middle when we're literally in the middle of our contract and we're always the first ones to have to get creative to figure it out. But those are really about the only, and again, it's the collaborative nature of us trying to figure it out together. But I mean, the contract is really so tight right now that it's, that, that part is always the easy part. Cause I mean, you know, first time I was here, Alan had a decent stack and it was like, this, this time. So it, it made it really, really easy.
Robert, last call.
No, I'm sorry. No, I, I agree, everything's been a real easy process all the way through. And it, and you're right, it does get easier each time because we, you know, this is our, you know, ninth year working together on this and, and, uh, we know each other pretty well and we get to a point where we know the contract pretty well and then what needs to change. And really, a lot of times the only thing needs to change is, you know, you want to increase benefits or increase money, but at the same time, the language stuff doesn't have to change all that often. And usually it's, when we have that wild card thrown in, I, I think both sides have done a really good job of figuring out how, okay, how can we make this work? I mean, I remember the first one was when the state came in and, and really messed up the teacher retirement. And you guys stepped to the plate and came up with a creative way of, you know, half four oh three B, half year percent and trying to get it worked out, then also writing in, you know, an amendment to it that if it goes back like it should, then we'll go back to the way it was and we won't, you know, keep it this way or that. I mean, it's just being able to work together has made the process so much easier. Cause like I said, I've been doing this for a long time and I've been on the other side where it hasn't been easy. This has been a really, really easy process. You guys make great work with, so.
Okay, so with that, I'll entertain a motion officially proven and adopt the F Y twenty-five, twenty-seven S E A collective bargaining agreement as ratified in March.
Almost there.
Motion was made by Mr. Dominic, second by Mrs. Lyon to approve the S E A contract. Mr. Dominic?
Yes.
Mrs. Lyon?
Yes.
Mr. Helm?
Yep.
Mrs. Dublock?
Yes.
Mr. Kaber?
Yes.
Mrs. Cleveland?
Yes.
Mr. Fuller?
Yes.
Motion here.
Kayla, where do you want us to sign this contract?
I liked the picture from last time.
Get our backs, something like that.
Well, like I was coming.
So you want us to get, get in the middle here and sign it?
We're going to close the door and not let you out.
None of that seems to work.
Do you need the light, Kayla, or do you want to, do you need that light on the light?
Erin, is it okay if I shoot this over? Just the way that, I'm pretty sure it's from this. I think there were old town pictures last time.
We're going to be on this.
Hey Sue, I need, well, Robert and I will be listening then.
Aren't you going to give the pen away after every letter?
Yeah. Yeah, like the president, right?
Do you have a pen so you can do it at the same time? Pens are private.
It's like, I know.
You don't have to actually write.
I'll pretend, I'll pretend I'm writing.
Thank you. Focus on the paper, please. Yeah, I think I might like this one better. Got it, thank you.
And the handshake one?
Oh my gosh.
Come on, come on. Yes. Okay, so you need to come sign, secretary. Tammy, you need to come sign as president.
Here, did you see it looks really nice?
That is a good. Those are great.
I mean, you don't, you don't have your secretary here, do you?
I don't believe so.
She's not here.
So we can.
Done.
Someone to lose your negotiations chair.
Oh, who was the negotiating chair?
Probably you.
Probably Carl?
Yeah.
Okay, right.
With blue, with blue.
There you go, thank you. Thank you, no problem.
I just went with the hallway, yeah, it's okay.
All right.
Awesome.
All right.
Done. Yeah, we'll get it uploaded online soon and it'll be, it'll be public on the, once we get the final draft. It should be pretty close, ready to publish, taking effect on July first.
Dr. Johnson, do you want us to have our secretary sign it factored over that page tomorrow? We can set, she can fax us that. Jen.
Trish.
All right, I will find her, don't worry.
Okay, while he's finishing that over, we'll go over to communication and correspondence, anything?
He's like, you're not going. He goes, you're not going. And then I felt bad because I couldn't get hold of them. I'm calling, I'm just, I'm busy.
That big dog of the year.
Do you want to talk about the?
Yeah.
Want to talk about this?
Um, yes, uh, also included in your, uh, in your board packet was a copy and we have some tangible ones here. I want to give credit to two people. This is our Sherard High School Student Support Services. Our very own Ms. Lyon came and talked about what she had seen and a boss had made it and I grinned and said, we can do better than that. And I then, by we, of course, I meant Kayla and then I immediately turned it over to Kayla and boom, Bob's your uncle, check this out. This is awesome and better than any of them that we brought in for.
Oh, yeah. And it was at a Great Life, Great Matters.
Great Matters, excuse me.
And a meeting and other school districts are giving these out at the meetings. And I'm like, whoa, wait a minute, we need one. And I'm like, oh, wait a minute, we need one. And that's, excellent job, excellent day.
Lots of credit though to the council department because they had all the information ready to go. It certainly no time to design it because they had the info exactly the way I needed it, so it was great, yeah.
Yeah.
Can we, for like around the school or flowers, this QR code thing is awesome. Are we posting those just kind of around the building at all? So if you don't want the whole pamphlet brochure, you can just scan the.
Aren't they in the bathrooms?
Yep, yep, they're in the bathrooms.
They're in the bathrooms there.
Yeah. Yeah, they have fly, like one-pagers up. And it's been like that for ages.
Nice, I tell a good idea, university.
Put different things above the journals or in.
Yeah, we have, we have ours called toilet paper. Ours is called the toilet paper, it's the history newsletter.
Okay, let's see here.
So is that like on the leave, is it like kids are accessed in the shed or?
These are, yeah, they're.
I know, there's a little blue sticky note there. I described some ways that are already going to be sticking on their folders and they've gotten available in their office too. But they're going to come up with more ways to use them so that we have our folder one.
We will talk to them. You're wearing a Hawaiian shirt.
He prints it, okay.
It's like purple socks, right? It's supposed to be, it's purple, huh? Aloha Tigers, all right?
Okay, any future agenda items? Okay, here none. I'll entertain a motion going into closed session, quote to 5 L S C 120 C, subsection C, subsection 1 through 12, 16 and 21. Is there a second?
Motion was made by Mr. Helm, seconded by Mrs. Lyon to go into effective session. Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
Thank you, everyone, for coming tonight.